And I'm going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, July 12th, and I'd like to note for the record that we have council members both present in the court, in the NatU Hill Room as well as online. So we will do a roll call to establish attendance. First, here, present in the room, Counselor McKim.
Present in the room.
Counselor Crossley?
Here.
Counselor Decker?
In the NatU Hill Room.
Counselor Iverson?
I am present.
Counselor Munson?
I am also present here in the room.
Okay, as am I. And Counselor Hawke? Yay, she's present online and communicating. Perfect. Now we will proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, to a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is our Fund for Public Commerce, where items that are not listed on the agenda, if you have a tie on it, if there are any members of the public who would like to speak, go, raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or a person can put their hand up here in the courtroom.
It was.
It was. That's me, so we will move to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item? Nice agenda. We don't change this. And if it's time for department updates, do we have any departments that would wish to make an update at this time? Are there any of the council members? If it's related to your liaison.
Yes, I'd just like to share that the convention and visitor center board met on June 24th, and that tourism here in Monroe County is going very strong. So we're really excited that everyone's coming here for events and are booking hotel rooms and things like that. I did want to mention that we had 10 events that wanted to use our convention center, but there just wasn't room for those events. And so it's nice that people are reaching out to us that want to come here, but just simply are not able to because of that. And we have done some analysis and found that that's, they would have spent around $2.6 million here in Monroe County if we had had that space. So that's just one of those indices that I thought I'd throw out there, and we're doing well, and I think we can continue chugging along here.
Can I ask for a quick clarification on that?
I wish you would.
Thank you. When you say that we did not have space for them, do you mean that the physical space in our current convention center would not accommodate the size of the group, or do you mean that our schedule would not have accommodated it?
The first. So we don't pursue groups that are too large for our facility, but these groups came to us and said, we want to be in Monroe County, and we had to say, we just don't have the space for you. We would love to host you. So.
All right. Thank you for that essay.
You're welcome.
Counselor Munson?
A related item for the public to appreciate is that our food and beverage tax collection for the prior month exceeded all previous months. We are increasingly doing better and better. Thank you to our wonderful restaurants and other facilities here in Monroe County. And I think we can look forward to continued growth. All that relates to an expanded convention center.
Counselor Decker?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the reports of the two counselors before me, and I would add that I, this segues into one of my liaison reports is that this is a community where people want to come to and they want to live. And that is a beautiful, beautiful blessing that this community has. We should embrace it along with that convention center. And that actually came up in a conversation I had with our Veteran Service Officer, Mr. Miller, Stephen Miller. He'll be here with counsel, I think, at the end of this month, reporting on the work that our Veteran Service Office does. It is tremendous. If there are constituents, folks watching at home that have veterans in their family, and they want to know more about that office or what it does, this will be a wonderful report to hear about it. And talking about growing numbers, the growing service that they're doing is absolutely amazing. So thanks to him and look forward to that report. Thank you.
Yes, Michelle.
I can make that announcement now. I was saving it for the end of the meeting, but let me just put it out there right now. Sophia Travis grant applications are due this Friday at noon. So please pay attention to the noon deadline. And following the presentations by each of the applicants to the Sophia Travis Grants Committee and to the public here in this room or via CATS, will be on, I didn't have that written down yet, Michelle. It's July 27th at 4:30 PM here in the NatU Hill Room or on CATS. And the public really likes to see what our various nonprofits and other organizations are proposing, and this will be your opportunity.
Thank you. Are there any other council liaison updates? Alrighty, then we will move to item seven from our legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve the legal department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 10000277, General Fund Legal, in the amount of $75,000 in the services category.
Thank you very much. Dave Schelling from the legal department. And as Counselor Decker mentioned, we're requesting an additional appropriation of $75,000 for litigation line. And we have several related lines, litigation and litigation deduction. And the litigation deduction line is used to pay, to reimburse insurance companies for defense costs, because we have a deductible of about $15,000 per case on our insurance policies. The litigation line is used for litigation expenses such as depositions, or if we need to hire outside counsel. And recently, we have been involved in a few cases requiring outside counsel, one being the Huff cases in federal court, and the other being the Houston South case, also in federal court. So we're requesting this $75,000 to cover anticipated attorney's fees in those two cases. And just for purposes of putting this request together, we have allocated approximately $50,000 for the Barnes and Thornburg fees and $25,000 for the U-Banks fees for the Houston South case.
Okay, thank you. Are there any counselors who would like to have?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to ask my colleagues to potentially support a motion to separate this amount of $75,000 into two votes, so that I can abstain from the discussion and vote on the Houston South appropriation due to my employment.
Counsel, in the spirit of that request, I move to approve Counselor McKim's request to separate the additional appropriation amount into, one, an appropriation to cover up to 50,000 of litigation services by Barnes and Thornburg, and, two, an appropriation to cover up to 25,000 of litigation services by U-Banks and Associates, PLLC, for a total amount of $75,000 in Fund 10000277, General Fund Legal in the Services category.
Second. Okay, are there any questions or comments on the motion? Let's have a roll call vote, please. Not really.
Test, test, test.
That seems better, but maybe?
This is a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Correct.
The motion is separate.
To separate.
This is to separate.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Counselor Iverson? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's do the Barnes and Thornburg appropriation, which was the $50,000 for the Huff case first. Are there any comments or questions on that item? Okay, in that case, could I have a roll call vote on the appropriation of $50,000 for Barnes and Thornburg?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Okay, is there, we will now take up the $25,000 for, dollars for U-Banks and Associates, and that one is the Hoosier National Forest case, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on that item, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor McKim?
Abstain.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed five, one, and one abstain.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now we move to item number eight from our prosecutor's office.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request to create new account lines in Fund 91291129623, Adult Protective Services Grant, as set out on the agenda, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $258,674.10 in the personnel category, $1,100 in the supplies category, and $16,092.69 in the services category, for a total appropriation
Second.
And it looks like we have Erica Oliphant and Beth Hamlin from our prosecutor's office. Welcome.
Good evening, counselors. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can, yes.
Great. This is a request to appropriate our Adult Protective Services Grant funding from the state. Unfortunately, as is often the case, the state has not gotten us the contract yet. We don't even know exactly what our, our total amount of funding is going to be. However, in order to keep the department, you know, funded and able to keep salary being paid, we are confident there will be a, a contract coming. Prosecutor Oliphant is a member of the IPAC APS Committee and is unaware of any talk of any cancellation of contracts or anything. There's not been any discussion of that. We're confident, you know, this is a contract that we've had for 25 years, plus 30 years almost with the state. I don't have any doubt that we will have a contract, we just don't have it yet. What I've done is just brought forward our, the same amounts from last year in the same lines to allow us to maintain, you know, the, the programming. And I'll just have to come back with adjustments once we have the signed contract in hand.
If I may just supplement what Ms. Hamlin has said, I do serve as the Chair of the IPAC Adult Protective Services Committee, and we are in negotiations for the budget for the next cycle. So I know that we're going to get a contract for this, the cycle. And I, last year, I think we received it around July 15th, so I expect that it will be coming soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this issue? Okay, but I have a roll call vote, please, Michelle.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And we have a second item, item 8B.
Counsel, I move to approve the prosecutor's request to amend the 2022 Salary Ordinance in Fund 100000009, General Fund Prosecutor, and change account line 17801, part-time hourly range rate from $14 to $21.32 to a range of $14 to $31.28.
Second.
Great, thank you. So we are asking for this increase in this part-time hourly pay for someone who is a newly sworn attorney here in Indiana. This person has been in the part-time position in our office for over a year. She started in our office before that as an unpaid law student intern, but about a year ago, we offered to pay her part-time to help me cover a vacancy in a misdemeanor position until I was able to hire someone full-time. After that, we kept her on part-time to conduct legal research and writing and as paralegal support for the deputy prosecutors. She has conducted evidence review, case research, as well as assisted with trainings for law enforcement in the community. I had a deputy prosecutor out on medical leave this spring, and she was able to help me prepare that attorney's cases for court with my supervision. She passed the February bar exam here in Indiana and was licensed to practice law without attorney's supervision in May of this year. I currently have a deputy prosecutor who is out on maternity leave, and so this part-time attorney is now helping to cover that caseload. She, now that she's licensed, I have sworn her in as a deputy so that she is able to attend court unsupervised, and that's on top of the, the case prep that she was already doing before. This has been an invaluable help to my staff and me. One of the reasons that I'm asking for this is, this is sort of the low-end hourly pay for a deputy prosecutor position. I expect that a full-time deputy prosecutor, I expect a vacancy soon. And this is partially a measure to keep this person in the wings for that anticipated vacancy. This person is really great, she does a great job, and, you know, prosecutors all over the state are struggling to hire and retain deputy prosecutors. So my hope is, we're getting her trained up, and that training will continue to serve Monroe County. This is a mutually beneficial arrangement, and we should be able to cover this increase without any additional appropriation, because we've had some unusual circumstances this year, some vacancies and some unpaid leave. So we should have the funds to cover it. I do not anticipate that this would be a recurring situation. It's just kind of unique to this person and this year's circumstances. But I'm hoping that you will allow me to use this creative solution to retain a qualified person and to help cover a busy caseload. I'd like to also make this change effective at the beginning of this current pay period. So I think the first worked day might have been July 5th. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I see that we do have a question from Counselor Hawke.
Yes, recently, we had something very similar from the assessor's office, and we have determined that we could use a separate line item for a transit, what did we call that line item? Well, we had somebody who might be rather in a growing position, ready to take over any vacancy that you have. Would this not be better? And then you could, once we establish that line, it would not be a part of your part-time line, and you could then move dollars over into that line.
Are you talking about, are you talking about creating a full-time line?
No. Michelle, would you explain why we're speaking up?
What it is called, it's called the temporary training, training line. And we have that currently set up as a full-time position. So when we make, heaving and somebody's coming in, since this person is part-time, I don't feel like that line would qualify for that type of use.
I mean, she could very easily go full-time. She would prefer to go full-time. We'd prefer to have her full-time.
The reason why I feel like that would be a better solution to your problem is that you're then saying, okay, she is ready to go to full-time, and you could use the extra dollars that you have in this transitional line until you have a vacancy. You know, you always have vacancy every time. So that way, that dollar amount, you wouldn't have to raise the, all of your part-time, it wouldn't be a part, a part-time, it would not delete dollars from your part-time. And you would be rewarding her for what she is prepared to do. Because you're not saying you plan for her to remain part-time in the item, right?
Yeah, I'm expecting she'll be full-time in the next few months, would be my guess.
Right. So it seems, that seems to me that would be a good alternative for you. And we, we are now preparing to do that and offer that to many departments. So whatever works best for you. I just want to suggest it.
Counselor McKim?
Yeah, I guess I thought that when we had created those temporary training lines in the past, the purpose was when the incumbent, when the incumbent in the position was leaving, but the department wanted to be able to hire the new person who was taking that full-time position and have them both on at the same time for a short period of time to do a transition. Wasn't that the, it wasn't just to have a part-time person as, as kind of to backfill before they fill at part-time, but it was to have the, the old employee and the new employee be able to overlap at the same time.
Right. And I understand, I guess maybe I understood what Ms. Oliphant was saying. I thought she said somebody was leaving. But maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, I think effectively, that's kind of what we're doing, because we have her training and, and working as a deputy prosecuting attorney with the anticipation that we will have another deputy prosecuting attorney leaving in the next, in the next few months. But it's not exactly to shadow the exact same person that's leaving. She is, she is shadowing a deputy prosecutor and getting mentored by several of us as she's training up to do the job right now.
So maybe that doesn't work. Anyway, thanks.
Yep, Beth has something to say.
Yeah, I would, I would certainly love to be able to do this. I will say that I did not do the calculations to include full-time benefits. So I cannot promise that we can do this, you know, especially not knowing when the other full-time position would come vacant. I cannot promise that I wouldn't have to come back for an additional appropriation if we were to do the full-time. I just want to be transparent.
And to be clear, on the others, they, they didn't take them to full-time either. They started out part-time, but in a transitional line. I think we did that at the airport as well. But if you don't have a date that the other person might be leaving, then this might not be a good, good solution.
Yeah, I don't have a date certain. So I, I think, given the information that we have in front of us, the best option is for me to just request, as we have done, to increase the part-time hourly pay so that we can sort of pay her on, more on par with the work that she's doing and.
Sure. Okay, Ms. Kim, you had something?
Yes, Ms. Oliphant asked for an effective date for the beginning of this pay period. The beginning of this pay period would be July 3rd.
Okay.
So that would encompass this, the current pay cycle.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Okay, I think this seems like a really, not just reasonable, but a good thing to do for retaining good people who are contributing to the departments. So are there any public comments before we move to a vote? Seeing none, could we have the roll call vote, please?
I, I just want to make clear that this would be a salary ordinance amendment effective as of July 3rd. Okay, thank you. Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thank you all so much.
Sure thing. Thanks for being here. And now we have item number nine, which is our Community Corrections and Probation Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines in Fund 91220000, JDAI Coordination, as set out on the agenda, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $3,600 in the supplies category and $11,400 in the services category, for a total appropriation of $15,000.
Second.
And we have, it looks like Christine McAfee is here from the JDA program. Welcome.
Hello, and good evening, everybody. This is the first part of a two-part request on today's agenda. I am part A and part C. So I'll hop off, let Becca do her gig, and then I'll be back, just FYI. As you all probably remember, when we get our JDAI grant funds, they're in two kind of buckets of money. This $15,000 is to help with coordination and implementation of the resources and the opportunities that we provide. When I come back for part C, I'll do a little bit more presentation on what we've done with the past grant, what we're looking at doing with our next grant, how much money we've gotten, how much money we've saved, those kinds of things, unless you have any specific questions for me right now.
I think this makes, this one's short and sweet. Let's do this. Are there any comments or questions from council? Okay, any public comment on this item? No? Okay, and we have a roll call vote then.
Whoa. Now you can hear me, okay. Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. And so now we have item 9B.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines in Fund 9105. to create new account lines and fund 9105-9623 Indiana Judicial Supreme Court Grant as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $8,000 in the Services category.
Second.
And we have Ms. Becca Strite from the same program. So, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Becca Strite, Community Corrections Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. This grant, we have been receiving for several years now from the Indiana Office of Court Services. This goes to help our problem-solving courts. We have four problem-solving courts, Drug Court, Mental Health Court, Veterans Court, and Reentry Court, all overseen by Judge Decoff. A few of the highlights from this grant, one is for training and travel for staff. In fact, in a couple of weeks here, our problem-solving courts, not only our problem-solving court staff, but also the problem-solving court team will be headed off to Nashville for the National Association of Drug Court Professionals. They have an amazing conference every year. The grant also helps with what we call barrier busters or bus tickets to help some of our participants with transportation issues. And then this also helps with some really nice tokens and items upon graduation. So when our clients graduate from their, their problem-solving court program, there's a lovely graduation ceremony for all of them. And we provide them with some little tokens to commemorate that. And then lastly, this also helps provide some money for incentives for our participants. We know through evidence-based research that incentives are more meaningful than sanctions. So we do everything we can to reinforce and reward positive behavior, positive change. One of the things that we do is for an incentive that's earned, clients can earn $25 off their, their next drug screen, which is a very popular choice that people have when they, when they get to pick their incentives. So that's what this grant is. Again, we've had it for several years now, and this is just continuing those programs.
Hey, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public comment on this item? And seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
And now we're back to item 9C.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and fund 9123-0000 JD AI Programming as set out on the agenda and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $14,525 in the Supplies category and $40,475 in the Services category for a total appropriation of $55,000.
Second.
Welcome back, Ms. McAfee.
Hello, and thank you for having me back. If, I would like to share my screen. I have just a really quick presentation on some of the great stuff that we've been able to do with the support of the county and all of our community members and stakeholders. So, oops, hold on, I got to figure out how to get things to change. Am I able to share my screen?
It looks, we can see it from here.
Okay, is it on slide two?
I don't think so. It says Monroe County Juvenile Detention.
All right. Well, I might just have to tell you about it. I can send it later as an email. I practiced this before I got on here, and everything was working splendidly. But I guess that's what happens when Go Live doesn't always go live. Anyway, I'll go ahead and just tell you the great, the exciting stuff. Monroe County became a JD AI member in 2014, and we have been able to get grants for the intervening years. In 2021, '22, we received $75,000. And we also, you might remember, received a $95,000 Performance Bonus Award, which was in recognition of the work that we had been able to accomplish during our time with JD AI. The grant amount, the total grant amount that we have been awarded for fiscal year 22, '23, which July 1st to June 30th, is $70,000. All of that money adds up to over $700,000 that Monroe County has been able to receive since our inauguration, inaugural year in 2014. The amount of money that we are awarded is based on a formula that the state uses in large part, how much money is available. And then they also look at where in the process are counties. So first-year counties, first, second, third-year counties get a little bit more to kind of help build up some of the opportunities that they feel like the county needs. And then also, we get it in two buckets of money, as you might remember. So we have the coordination, implementation, and then the programming. In 2013, we had what was considered to be our baseline year. And so every year, we turn in a report card to the state. And 2013, our average daily population in secure detention was three youth. Obviously, some days more, some days, yeah, less. But when you balance it all out, it was three youth. 2021, we had 1.6 youth as an average daily population. We all know Monroe County has never utilized security detention with any, we've never overly utilized secure detention. For a jurisdiction our size, we use it very, very cautiously. But just reducing that three child to 1.5, that's almost a 50% decrease in the utilization. And part of our job, I know, is to talk about dollars and money saved. But I think it's also important to make sure that we're talking about real-life human beings here. So we've got one and a half less children every day in what's the equivalent of in a juvenile jail. I think that's amazing, and something certainly to be applauded. In 2013, we had 66 youth admitted into secure detention. Those are not unique youth, those are admissions. And in 2021, we had 34, which again, is almost a 50% reduction in the number of youth going into detention. Average length of stay decreased in 2013 to 2021, almost 7%. It's about a day. One of the interesting things we've kind of been cautioned about is as we look at putting the right kid in the right place for the right length of time, it's not uncommon to see average length of stay actually increase because we're not using detention for those 24, 48, 72-hour holds that we might have been previously. So I think it's a really nice compliment to our community that we've been able to decrease the average length of stay, even when we're looking at the reduction in the number of admissions. The final kind of measurement that our DOC partners look at are how many youth are we committing to the Indiana Department of Correction? And in 2013, we had three young people. In 2021, we had one young person that was committed, which is about a 65% reduction. Again, when you look at the numbers that we're decreasing, they're not staggering. But we didn't start at a really high platform either. But we have continued to make really impressive progress in keeping young people in our community and really working toward trying to keep them in our community and engaged in pro-social, community-supported opportunities. Our 2022, '23 grant, we are looking to expand community diversion opportunities. The research is real clear, if we can keep people in our community and hook them into services that already exist, the likelihood for continued success is very, very high. And what we're hoping to do is just to increase capacity of existing resources. We don't want to repeat, or we don't want to duplicate what's already out there. We're also looking to support youth and family engagement opportunities and continue to support local youth initiatives. Sorry, I was trying to read what I was saying as well as I'm talking. So when we look at the amount of money that we spend in security detention in 2013, which was our, the baseline year for JD AI, we had almost $220,000 that was spent for security detention costs. In 2021, it was just over $70,000. I know $70,000 is still a lot of money. But when we look at how much we've decreased the utilization and the cost of security detention in a time when decreasing cost is not something we're oftentimes talking about, again, I think it's an extraordinary compliment to the work of the council, the commissioners, certainly our agency leadership and our community to be able to support these initiatives and programs. So thank you.
Wow, thank you. That's really impressive and great to hear about. Are there any questions or comments from counselors? Counselor Iverson.
Let's see, can you see us okay? I think, I think you can now. I just wanted to comment, and it was a great presentation, and it's really exciting to see this program working. And the dollars saved, that's amazing. To go from 220 down to 70,000 a year and at the same time keeping kids in the community in services that exist, that's great. Thank you for sharing that.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor McKim.
Do you have a sense of statewide how the program is, how well the program is working? Is there, are there any other success stories, or, you know, how many other counties participate?
There are currently 34 counties out of our 92 that are involved in JD AI. The first counties began in 2006, and the last counties began their partnership with the state in 2020 to 2021 fiscal year. So there, there've been a wide range of times and involvements. I can tell you that the state profile is very, very encouraging for reducing number of young people being committed to the Indiana Department of Correction, young people being decreases in days in security detention. In all honesty, the area that the state continues to struggle, as does Monroe County, is making sure that we're seeing those same decreases with our black and brown children that we're seeing with our white children, that while all of the numbers are coming down, when you disaggregate the data, there's still some further digging that we need to do. And that's not something that's unique to Monroe County. But all of the counties that are involved in the program are seeing tremendous positive outturns with keeping kids in the community. The other thing I'd like to point out is that one of the other measurements is community safety. And so we've looked at how many felony petitions were filed in the state or in each county. Because, you know, JD AI was, we were always very, very cautious to say, you know, this is never intended to be kind of a jailbreak, where we're just never going to lock anybody up, and kids are going to run amok, and communities won't be safe. The community safety indicator, again, is that juvenile crime is going down. Young people who are committing violent felony-level offenses are going down. Part of the regrettable part, I think, is that oftentimes, those that are engaging in that kind of behavior grab headlines. And so it can feel like things are turning badly again, but the research really does not support that. So yes, those counties that are involved in the program are seeing tremendous success. Great question, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, should we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We now are at item 10 from our Building Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Building Department's request to approve the updated job descriptions and to amend the 2022 salary ordinance with the updated job titles and classifications as set out on the agenda.
Second.
Great, and I believe we have Mr. LaRue from our Building Department, welcome.
Sorry, Robert, do you mind turning your mic on?
Wait, hold on.
Is that better? Yes. All right. I was just saying that Kim has been absolutely fantastic and a huge help. And I'm sure that's not a surprise to anybody here. So I just wanted to make sure you all knew that I recognize that as well. So here, here tonight to talk about our job descriptions, a couple of the major changes in the job descriptions include the creation of a deputy building commissioner. I believe that's the first time the county would have a deputy building commissioner. I think it's an important position to have to kind of smooth transitional time periods, timeframes, kind of help the, make sure the department is still functioning the way that the county needs it to function during any kind of transition that could occur. The other change is to create a second office manager. There will be a commercial office manager and a residential office manager, and their duties will be split by our two different permit types. One of the other changes to the descriptions is to not rely so heavily on formal education through university-type programs and kind of transition that to more technical training, field experience in construction trades, and then shift to a more formal certification process and education in specifically building inspection. The job descriptions are also set up to kind of create the ability and understanding of how to move up into the department and provide training for folks when they come in and create positions that help mentor new inspectors and to do this the way that we think is the right way to do it. And I'm very proud of the folks that work in our departments. And we work hard to make sure folks have what they need in the community, and I want to make sure that continues. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about the job descriptions.
Thank you, and it's nice to meet you as well. Are there questions or comments?
Yeah, counsel, I just wanted to make sure that you all saw in the packet, this, these requests have gone before Wagner, Irwin, and Shili with. And we have talked about this at PAC. PAC is unanimously voted to bring this before counsel with a positive recommendation. And for those of you watching on CAT, or on CATs, this does not seem to be appearing on the agenda that's on the website. So I just wanted to make sure that I said this out loud, that, you know, this has gone through the channels and everything like that.
Just to clarify, there's two agendas on there. There's the original, and then there's one on there called amended.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. See, it's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so I just want to, I guess I want to make a couple of things clear. So first of all, this does not represent any net new positions. This is a reorganization of existing positions. That is correct. And so as far as the changes go, basically, it's one position being upgraded from a PAT C to a PAT D. And that would be moving from the senior building inspector to deputy commissioner. That's correct. And then another, an administrative assistant being moved up from a Comet B to a Comet C. That's correct. Okay.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. LaRue? All right, any public comment? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Oh, yes.
Adam President, have a question?
Sure.
I believe that's for next year's budget, is that correct? If I'm remembering that right? That was brought to us so that we would have it ready for our budgeting session?
That was not my understanding, because we started this process back in February when he took over, so I, yeah.
Okay, I thought it was for next year. Okay, I thought it was for next year.
Yeah, and then in fact, in, in PAC, we had the discussion where Angie originally thought she'd have to come for an additional appropriation to be able to fund this. But then realized that there was, because there are so many vacancies that she wouldn't need to, need to do that. So I think that, to me, implied that the intention was to start immediately. I mean, obviously with, with no additional appropriation, so we'll have to make it work through transfers.
Perhaps that should be a part of the motion, so it's very clear when you want the change in the salary to take place. I mean, like we did in the last one, when we said it would start first.
I actually didn't hear what.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Your voice is a little bit low. The volume in here is a little low. So you want, you would like us to be more specific about when salary changes are occurring?
Right, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, I think we did that on one just before this, a couple before this, when we said that that salary change was going to begin, what, at the beginning of this pay period? Is that what, what your understanding would be or when do you think it would be?
That's a good point. We did specify that in the last vote on the salary ordinance.
So do we, do we need to make another motion for the effective date?
What, what should the effective date be or what would you like?
Um, if you want to keep it with the current, the current pay schedule would be July the 3rd.
In, in this case, do we need a motion or does a conversation suffice to, to clear up council intention?
I personally, I would, if we're going to put an effective date, I would like to have it in a motion so that I can set it out in the salary ordinance.
Okay, council, I move that we set the effective date for the changes that we just made in the building department to be effective July 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this question? Okay, then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. Thank you, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, thank you.
Madam President, may I make a quick related comment?
Sure.
But since this has now come up twice, we ought to just, we just, as part of, kind of part of our checklist, anytime we do a salary ordinance, we just ought to include the effective date. So that's just, well, from now on, we can just set that out on the agenda. Does that work?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
That's a great idea. Thank you. All right, and thank you, Mr. LaRue. And now we're at item 11, which is our own council office. Let's show, sorry.
Counsel, I move to approve the council offices request to approve the job descriptions for the part-time council administrative assistant physician as set out on the agenda and forward the job descriptions to Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy to be added to the Monroe County job description database.
Second.
Would you like to let, make sure everybody's on the same page with this item?
Sure, um, as we were working on our part-time, permanent part-time job description. I noticed that we had it titled the same as our current part-timers, who is just a transcriber. And that's all she does is transcribe. So I just wanted to come before you, make that change to the transcriber job description title. And then have you guys approve the job description for the other permanent part-time position. And then allow me to forward these job descriptions to WIS so that they can be added to their, our database from Monroe County.
Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about this item? Yes.
Only that I'm glad to see that we're handling our, our new compensation system so well and that we're, we're doing this with part-time positions as, as they come up as well. I think we'll be much better for it.
Anything further? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? And I see none. So a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And now we're on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2022 salary ordinance to correct the count number from 15145 to 17106 officer in charge. The incorrect count number was submitted and approved by council at the June 28th work session.
Second.
Me again. What happened was when I submitted for approval at the June 28th work session, I used a full-time position number rather than a supplemental number. And the officer in charge is a supplemental. And so I wanted to correct that and we need to make that effective for July the 3rd.
Sounds good. Are there any questions or concerns from council? Any, any public comments? And a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And now we are on to item 12. I can hardly believe it.
Counsel, I move to approve the June 14, 2022 regular session minutes as presented.
Second.
Do we have any council members who would like to change or offer additions, tractions to the minutes? Already then, we have a roll call vote to approve them.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Great, thanks. And that brings us to council comments. Are there any members of council who would like to make comment this evening? Yes.
Yes, council, you, you received a, an email related to this earlier. But the, I've got here a letter of commitment from community stakeholders in support of a grant application from Centerstone to, related to mobile crisis response. And in particular, the goal of the grant that they're applying for, the goals are to A, increase the capacity of mobile crisis response teams while expanding access in high-need communities. B, increase collaboration to improve crisis stabilization in the community for adults, children, and youth. And C, improve equity in the content, continuity of care and post-crisis follow-up, including those with suicidal ideation and/or a previous suicide attempt. This is just an opportunity to sign this letter of support for the grant as individuals. And it's not, there is no financial commitment. This is not a matching, we're not being asked for a match or anything like that. It's simply a, a support for the goals of the program and a, kind of a commitment to engage with the program in any one of a variety of ways that are appropriate for the county council. But there's no, we're not making any kind of financial commitment. It's just an opportunity here afterwards for everybody to sign if you would like to.
So this is a physical signature in person? Got that? Okay, okay.
And Counselor McKim? Um, Ms. Naomi Byerly, who's from Centerstone, who's involved in this grant writing application, is in attendance tonight via Zoom. If any council members have questions prior to wanting to sign the letter of commitment or support.
Wow.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that is fantastic. If she could be promoted to analyst, I'd love to hear more about it. In the meantime, Ms. Hawke, did you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I did, after receiving that, and then I was able to block out some time so I could study just what the proposal is and what kind of a commitment these has to do with. I think there's still a lot of unanswered questions, whether or not the other counties is being considered to be a part of the group. Whether they've signed off, whether their law enforcement, county council, county commissioner signed off. However, it, it appears to me that the goal of this is something that's extremely important and, and could and should be supported. And, and really, at this point, it seems to me, if everyone should agree, that perhaps the council president could sign off as, for the entire council or I mean, after his presentation, then people could make a decision.
Sure, sure.
Because I'm not there to sign, I'm just saying.
I understand. That makes a lot of sense. And it looks like Ms. Byerly is on screen now. Welcome. Perhaps you were able to hear some questions from Ms. Hawke, if you wouldn't mind being put on the spot?
That's my job. So I am the community outreach coordinator for one of our current crisis management grants at Centerstone and have been helping collect these letters for this potential new grant. So far, we have gotten a lot of support. So I'm looking at, I'm looking over here, I'm looking at my other screen. We have support from a few different hospitals, including hospitals in Columbus, IU Health Bloomington, Jackson County. We also have support from law enforcement from Jackson County, Bartholomew County. We have support from the jail commander in Bartholomew County Sheriff in Bartholomew County. Quite a lot of movement in Brown County on this and in Jackson County. There are a few other counties that this grant addresses. And unfortunately, because we received the request to get these letters fairly recently, we haven't been able to collect those yet. But if the participation we've had on our previous crisis management grants is any indicator, this is something that is popular and growing in popularity. So we've received a lot of community support thus far.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hawke?
Can you tell me, I reviewed it and I was trying to figure out if this would in any way bring more people to Monroe County needing services rather than keeping them in their own home county? That is, that would be my biggest concern.
Sure, that's a really good question. So I can tell you, our other grant is focusing on creating more resources in places like Bartholomew County and supporting our other offices that are throughout 26 counties in Indiana. This grant specifically is for mobile crisis. That would be coming out of Bloomington. And then we're working on building a mobile crisis team that would come out of Columbus as well. Those teams operate in a 60-minute radius. So they would respond in person to somebody within that 60-minute radius. They might be in another county because of that, for instance, Brown County. They would be able to come to the Crisis Diversion Center in downtown Bloomington. But we don't anticipate that this is something that will increase a lot of traffic into Monroe County. I can tell you, when we do work with clients experiencing crisis, we try to, we try to direct them to services that are closer to where they live. That way they're not having to come out to Monroe County for something they can get in their own home.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other questions from this Byerly? Yes.
Ms. Byerly, thank you for being here this evening. This is something we've been talking about for quite some time here in the Monroe County government. And I'm so happy that this has come before us. I think I'm certainly overly enthused to support this and I'm very happy that, that you're bringing it before us. And I just wanted to, to ask, you know, what, what is the, the capacity you think of this, this mobile crisis team going to be? And what are the dollar amounts that you're asking for here in the grant?
Sure. So the easiest question to answer would be the monetary question. This is a grant that is over the course of four years and it's about $700,000. That money is used to help pay salaries for people who work on our mobile crisis response teams as well as support training and infrastructure through our IT department. As far as capacity, we are following guidelines through the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration that outline what we should be able to do. Our goal is to have teams available 24/7. And we would like to have two people per team. Right now, we're in the process of hiring. We've had a lot of people apply. So it looks good. I would say we will probably at any given shift, the goal is to have two teams available to go in person. That being said, a lot of the calls we get, I think the estimate from SAMSA was about 80% can be resolved over the phone with a crisis specialist. So most of the calls we're getting, we're going to be maybe working with someone to help them de-escalate, help manage things like a panic or anxiety attack, help someone's safety plan if they're experiencing suicide ideation that is not so intense that they need in-person response or to go to the hospital. These are things that are a lot easier to accommodate because we can operate over the phone. And then about 20% of these calls are going to need that in-person response or EMS services with a lower amount needing EMS services. So I would say the capacity to help over the phone is much greater than our capacity to, to respond to calls in person. Because we also have a crisis line that we can lean on at Centerstone that operates both within the state and within the few, the multiple states that we work in. As far as in-person response, I would say it's just going to depend on the load. But the goal is to have two teams ready to go at all times.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you so much. I know, kind of put you on the spot there to think about the future. But again, we're just so enthusiastic about this.
Sure, sure. I think our biggest challenge right now is hiring. So if you know anybody who's interested in this work, please send them our way.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I, I learned about this today when I read an email from one of our legal staff, Mr. Jeff Cockrell. And I too was concerned about how we were obligated in, if we were to accept this grant. And I received detailed information from him and I want to lend my support for this grant. Thank you for bringing us additional information, too.
But so on the, on the theme of hiring, what, what are the credentials or qualifications that, that the personnel you're attempting to hire would have or skill set?
Sure, that's a really good question. This type of work is definitely more challenging than the typical work you see at Centerstone. One of the things we're very intentionally trying to do is hire people who have lived experience. That means people who have been in recovery from a substance use disorder or someone who's experienced mental health challenges. For those individuals, we're looking for someone to complete a peer, a peer services certification. So that requires some education and they also need to be in recovery for a long enough amount of time to where the things that they're going to be exposed to are not going to trigger an issue. Those individuals do not have to have a bachelor's degree, but they do have to complete the peer certification. Individuals with a bachelor's degree are great, especially people who have experience working in mental health crisis. especially people who have experience working in mental health crisis. And then we are also looking for social workers or therapists who would be able to help with these teams as well. Again, because of how intense this work can be, it isn't for everybody who works in mental health. So we need people who are able to handle crisis and be fairly cool and calm during it. They must be able to drive, of course. And, you know, someone who's willing to pay attention to their own self-care, too, because this work can be quite difficult at times. So it definitely requires a personality that can go a bit above and beyond the typical work you see in mental health care. Someone who's willing to deal with circumstances that are fairly serious where someone's life is on the line.
And then I assume that there's the coordination with law enforcement is is an important part of this because you want to make sure that these folks are not going into an unsafe situation.
Yes, absolutely. So I talked a little bit earlier about the 80% and the 20%. So in that 20%, we see calls where we do need to ask for help from EMS. So if someone is in imminent danger, for instance, somebody who is experiencing suicide ideation with plan and intent in a very lethal means such as a gun. In those instances, that's where we might want to ask for help. Someone who's already started. So again, an example would be someone whose plan is to overdose, and they've already begun taking medications. Someone who is using substances and has overdosed or someone who's threatening harm to somebody else. These instances put our employees at risk, but we also want to make sure that the individuals contacting us are safe. So in those instances, we're going to partner with law enforcement. We're really lucky in Bloomington, we have BPD social workers who are able to help us out. And their police department also is really aware of this and partners with us. And then we're also working with Monroe County Sheriff's Department and hope to be able to continue to facilitate that partnership so that if we need help from an officer, they know what they're getting into. We can offer them training and information on how to handle mental health crisis. So we're all on the same page.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic. Any other questions? Right, and Ms. Hawke, we could certainly have Michelle sign for you if you are interested. You can just let her know. Would that work? Okay. So thank you, and we'll have it. I'm certainly in support. I'll be signing it. I really appreciate the work that you've already been doing in the community on this topic. And I think it's just going to be growing to fill the big, the big need that we have. So thank you.
We're really excited. And I do want to note, this is in conjunction with 988. So if you are not familiar with that, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline will be accessible via dialing 988 on your phone, starting on the 16th of this month. So being able to create these systems and make them more robust and multifaceted means that as people get more familiar with 988 and as we get those calls in a little more, that we're able to respond better and divert people from legal or hospitalization. So we're hoping that this is a really good start.
Great, thanks so much. Okay.
I have a, that's okay. I was going to ask, is it okay to get you the signed document tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow should be fine. I'm hoping to get, I would like to get it in before 10:00 if possible, but I'll keep an eye on my email tonight if it comes in this evening, too. So there's a little bit of wiggle room if you need it.
No, I just wanted to make sure I have deadline, so.
Yeah, if I can get something tonight, that'd be great. But it's, I don't want to give you guys any more pressure than you already have.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, continued council comment. I have a council comment to make, and it's overdue, but that's how things go. I was out of town for a bit, and on June 29th, right after our last meeting, elected officials in Bloomington and Monroe County were given the opportunity to collaborate on a statement on the reversal of Roe v. Wade. And many of us did work on that, contributing to the content as well as signing the letter. And I wanted to read it out loud so that more folks in the community could hear the words that we put together and also sent to our state elected officials. So I've asked Counselor Munson and Counselor Crossley to help me read it out loud, although the three other counselors sitting here also signed the the statement as well. So here it is. "In response to the devastating and harmful decision by the U.S. Supreme Court to overturn Roe v. Wade, the undersigned elected officials in Bloomington, Monroe County, and township governments stand together in support of an individual's right to bodily autonomy and reproductive choice." Further.
"As community leaders in Bloomington and Monroe County, we are proud to fund the healthcare, childcare, and birth control needs of low-income individuals and families through multiple local grant programs and through township assistance. We stand with Planned Parenthood and the All Options Pregnancy Center as they meet the reproductive healthcare needs of the most vulnerable in our community." And.
"We call upon state legislators in Indiana to exercise reason and respect and to protect individuals' right to make their own healthcare decisions in consultation with their own healthcare providers. We object to any legislative course of action that further erodes a person's right to choose."
"Thoughtful compassion is the foundation of any just, equitable community. As elected officials, it is our responsibility to speak out when we see rights stripped away from our residents, and it is our obligation to oppose decisions that will cause unjust hardship and increase poverty for those we represent. We object to any civil or human right being taken away by activists on the U.S. Supreme Court into any legislative action that undermines the well-being of our residents or the state of Indiana." And the statement is signed by members of the city council, members of county council, all three of our county commissioners, and many other county elected officials, as well as township trustees. So thank you for allowing me to share those words. And hopefully, they make an impact at some level. Are there any other comments? Yes.
I just want to express my sincerest support for this, and I'm so thankful to be sitting up on this dais with you, you proud women, and I'm so thankful that you read that out loud. We have a lot of work to do ahead of us. And when, I just wanted to say that when one of us up here loses a right, we all lose a right. And so I just really thank you all for for your support in reading that.
Any other comments? I'm sorry. Marty, do you have a comment?
Well, when you're ready to move on to other council comments, I have one.
I am.
Okay, I want, just wanted to say a great big congratulations. I don't know whether anyone else saw it, but today was the birth of Jordan's baby girl, as well as Megan's. And Megan did well. Did not have to go to Indianapolis, had that baby right here. Came a little early, but they have their family complete now with a boy and a little girl. And it was a joyful day for the two people who work for county government and work with us very closely. So that was just, that that picture was just beyond beautiful, blessing.
Absolutely. It's a baby Lexi, I believe, right? And Megan is our council office assistant, and Jordan does payroll. So our county family grew. Thank you for that. That's a great, great note. Any other comments? Yes.
I just wanted, before it got away from the meeting, I wanted to just offer, in the last week and a half or so, the community lost a very tremendous public servant, firefighter, and friend, too many and all, and that is Robert Levesque. I always called him Bob. People have told me all week, they're like, I actually called him Rob. I think we all just called him. Because I was trying to think when I first met Rob, Bob, and it has to have been over 15 or 16 years, and I've known him in federal, state, and county service. And not literally three weeks ago, I ran into him along with Counselor Crossley, and he was inviting us for a ride-along with the city firefighters. And I just thought it was a magnificent thing. Just a tremendous person, very difficult type for his family. And certainly, they they are grieving him, as is this community. And if you ever kind of want to think of him, you can visit the 9/11 memorial out at Ivy Tech. And I have never been to that ceremony, that he wasn't there. So a double meaning, and we certainly think of his family.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? All right. With that, we will have this meeting adjourned. Have a lovely evening, everyone.